Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, 26, 2023. Roll call.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Hoogler?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shebeck?
Present.
We could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We begin this evening with public hearing. We have two items for that portion of the agenda. The first is the conditional use permit request for outdoor dining in the C3 district at 8941 Wilcox Drive, burgers to beer. If the applicant can please come forward, name and address, and describe for the community and the audience what it is you're looking for this evening.
Good evening. My name is Eli Mailer. I'm the architect on this particular project. Can you put the microphone down a little bit closer?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
I'm seeking your approval for an additional, for the patio, the outdoor patio, for burger, two beers.
Anything that you'd like to share on the project in general or any comments?
No. Basically, we're matching the brick that's on the building. It'll be lit according to the drawings that I submitted. And for safety reason, the masonry piers will be set at six feet apart, which was one of the requests made by the Building Commissioner.
And thank you. Opportunity for members of the community to come forward and speak on this item either for or against, or any comments whatsoever. Now is the opportunity to come forward on the conditional use permit request for outdoor dining. Seeing none, we will move on to the second item for public hearing, which is the conditional use permit for the self-storage, outdoor storage facility in the I-2 district, permanent parcel 64-08455 on Dutton Road. Applicant can please come forward, give a name and address and overview of the request this evening. I see your name there, Mr. Weber.
We made it to that already. God, I had a sidetrack. I apologize.
This is just the public hearing portion for your presentation to the community.
Matthew Weber, Weber Engineering Services, 2555 Hartville Road, Rootstown, Ohio. And here with me also this evening is the owner, Rahil Rashid. And we're looking for, we're requesting a conditional use permit for the self-storage facility on Dutton Road. You know, we have received a few comments back from the city, and we can work to comply with those. This is going to be a facility that will more or less have self-storage in the front off of Dutton Road. It'll be totally secured, or the plan is to be totally secured, and have access in, to access those via key card and access. And then in the back will be about a 4,500 square foot building that will be used more or less for transfer of property, if you will, in the sense that when someone moves, and you know, to can answer some more detailed questions. But when someone were to move, it's sort of an area where we bring household goods, things that they're moving, if they're transporting, and it would be a temporary area that would be staged until they move into another facility, you know, until they actually move to their final destination. And the property itself has some constraints to it with power easements that run on the north side of the property. And I do believe one of the items that did come up in discussion was a limited number of entrances on Dutton Road. Per code, I believe we may be limited to one, and may have to seek a variance to actually come up and use the layout that we have identified with two. The two entrances makes for better traffic flow throughout the site.
Thank you. Opportunity for members of the community to come forward and speak on this item either for or against, or any general comments to be made regarding the conditional use permit request for outdoor storage. Seeing none, have a seat, Mr. Weber. We'll get back to you shortly. That's the end of the public hearing then. Close that at 7:05, and we will roll into the work session agenda. The first item is the text amendment modification for child daycares as conditional use in the C5 district.
Okay, so this, we are revisiting this language. This was brought forward to us by Grand Village and was supported by Planning Commission and went to City Council for confirmation. City Council asked for some more specific guidelines. Language was drafted by the Law Director and wasn't quite what I was looking for. So then you should have gotten a revision here this morning via email. If you didn't get that, there's a hard copy at your seats to look at. The first sentence, "In order to ensure child safety, support pedestrian access and promote compatibility with the C5 district's mixed-use setting, fencing, buffering, and site design measures shall be required to mitigate any operational conflicts with adjacent uses." So that was planner language for, we are going to impose these conditions as well as the C5 mixed-use characteristics on any childcare proposal in that district. And then it further goes on to require a 20-foot wide landscaping or vegetated buffer, really in association with the outdoor play areas and adjacent uses. When this first came through Planning Commission, you all were happy with just letting it go through as a conditional use. That's how it advanced to City Council. So with the request for some additional buffering of the playyards, then that was just an opportunity to sort of beef up the language relative to the C5 district. And that's where that first sentence comes from.
Basically, for A and B, those are the only changes to what we originally recommended.
Exactly. And the one, the item B is to be licensed in the state of Ohio, so that would have been a given regardless. Really, the crux of this is the vegetative buffer, the landscape buffer if there is no vegetation, and just sort of a strengthening or reiteration of the C5 district goals, more or less. I just feel like, you know, we had talked about scenarios where maybe a child daycare wouldn't be so fabulous in the C5 district. And we talked about the conditional use process, allowing opportunities to put conditions. But this just sort of legally strengthens our ability to say reject a project that doesn't meet, have that pedestrian focus, that maybe would want parking to the front of the building, that just in whatever way seemed incompatible with the C5 district site. My thought is that the typical child daycare operations aren't necessarily, they don't necessarily mesh well with the C5 district. The site that we were considering or that was brought forward does, but possibly other sites don't so much mesh with it. So this gives us a little bit more of a basis to stand on.
All right. Thank you. I have no questions. I think it's fine as an addition to what we already recommended. And any questions? Steve? No. Greg?
Just, where's the 20 feet come from? Is that just a recommendation of that something done throughout Ohio or?
No. So I looked at about 10 ordinances, and then I measured the distance up there off of Vale Drive with those two daycare facilities. And I looked at the distance at the one on 91 as you're going into Hudson that has a butts on an access drive. And I think those ones on Glenwood near Vale Drive should have been slightly further towards Glenwood, which may be 10 feet behind those fences on the play yard. And I said, well, okay. I don't think 20 feet is absurd. I saw some that were 35 feet. So this was just for our community and me comparing various regulations that seem to hit the mark.
And this leaves room for like a multi-purpose pan between the road and the building?
It leaves room.
Depends where it's, where the playground's associated.
Right. I would see the playground still being in the side yard or rear yard. I don't see us permitting a play yard in the front yard. And I am going to say that the building will probably be close enough to the sidewalk that that will never happen in the C5 district.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael?
Zero objection.
David?
Good. Thank you.
Mayor?
No, I have no objection either. I think it's fine.
All right. Thank you, Len.
You're welcome.
We'll be able to move on to the regular meeting agenda. Second item in the work session is the lot splitting consolidation request for 9879 Shepherd Road. The applicant can come forward, give an address, and an update on what we have this evening.
All right. Elise Brown, 9879 Shepherd Road, Twinsburg. I think you should have a new map, basically a lot planner. So does that fulfill what we previously discussed as far as the requirements? Or, you know, because it does show on there a easement, you know, plotted out.
Yeah, I think what submitted picked up on the things that we had discussed previously. I think this evening motion, obviously you still are going to be required to get the approval of the variances for the lot with from the BZA. And I think there was a couple little things that the planner's report said need to be tweaked on the map. Not a big deal, just needs to be taken care of for final approval. But with what submitted, I have no issues with this this evening. Ed? Steve?
Yeah, I'm just, we're taking an existing non-conforming lot and making it a non-conforming lot a little bit bigger. I was the one that brought up the well issue, which now it has an easement, which now restricts what can be built on that lot because it's going to restrict the size of the house that may possibly could be built on that lot because they can't build where the easement is. They can't even put a deck over it. They can't put a patio over it. It has to be untouched. And if you look at the setback of the neighbors, you're really limiting the size of the house that you could put on there. So to even, if we approve this, we're going to have a lot that's going to come back later with a ton of variances for BZA to consider because of the size of the lot and the position of the house. And they're going to want them in the house forward to have the size of the house that they want. So it's just taking a problem and making another problem, in my opinion.
Thank you. Greg?
I have no questions.
Michael?
No questions.
David? Mayor?
No, I went over this with the planner today, and I have no issue with it.
Len, anything else on this that we should consider?
In regards to what Mr. Shebeck mentioned, there was a thought from the Building Commissioner when this advances to the Board of Appeals that possibly a building envelope should be indicated on the survey map for where the house could be placed, to sort of minimize any future variances. If the applicant were to sell the lot, then the new owner would know upfront that there was a building envelope that couldn't be eclipsed.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely a solution.
Yeah.
But in my honest opinion, this would be a lot consolidation, two lots making one property. And it'd be more appealing to put the entire house on that one property.
All right. Thank you. We'll get back to the regular agenda portion of this evening's meeting. Thank you. Third item, work session, is lot consolidation and right-of-way dedication to C5 district at the Holt Orthodontics site on Daryl Road. Applicant can please come forward.
I do not see the builder here.
Is this something that we're able to move on without an applicant? It is kind of straightforward.
It is pretty straightforward. I would say yes. If there ever was one, this would be it. Amy Moore, would you like to talk about the right-of-way expansion?
Welcome back.
I knew I was here for a reason. It may not be the reason I thought I was here for. We, as a city, we requested the additional right-of-way, which we've requested a lot on 91 when we developed for possible, nothing's planned at this point, but possible future widening in there to make a uniform consistent. We've also required the grading so that we do have some preliminary stuff that was done years ago that would tie in so that when we did, and if we ever did in 20, 30 years, whatever it comes in the city to do some widening in there, everything would tie together and mesh, and we wouldn't have to purchase right-of-way theoretically.
Makes sense.
So it was more of a request from the city that they donate that.
Anybody have any concerns until this going through? Anybody?
No, I appreciate the foresight because we all know that that area cannot consistently remain a two-lane driveway. It's because something's going to have to be done going forward just because of the amount of traffic and stuff. So I appreciate your forethought and seeking that right-of-way and getting it so we don't have to purchase it.
Thank you. All right. Keep rolling here on to the next item then. Is the conditional use permit request and site plan approval for the outdoor dining in the C3 district burgers to beer. Mr. Mailer can come back forward again. Is there anything else that you wanted to share with the Planning Commission regarding your submission this evening?
No, this would be a nice addition to the restaurant. In today's age of COVID, it's, a lot of people like to dine outside. And again, we're matching the construction brick and we're landscaping it. I think it'll be a nice attraction to the restaurant.
Thank you. There'll actually be two motions on this project. The first for the conditional use permit request, and the second for final site plan approval. Originally, I didn't think that was going to happen, but the applicant was able to provide the missing pieces that we're carrying landscape issues and lighting issues. So now we have everything we need. So I have no issues with this. Ed, anything?
No.
Steve?
No, I agree. I think it'll be a nice addition. And although we have limited outdoor eating season here in our area, still nice, people often eat outdoors. I'm sure that's nice.
Yeah. Greg?
No, I see that you have plenty of parking space with what you're talking about with the patio area, and I welcome the addition.
Michael?
Looking forward to seeing you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. David? Any comments?
No. It's going to be a nice addition.
Mayor?
Absolutely. I agree. Very nice addition and well-needed.
Len, anything else that you consider on this?
Nothing else.
See you back in a few minutes in the regular portion of the meeting.
Thank you.
Next item for the work session is the conditional use permit request for outdoor storage. On this application, Mr. Weber, anything else you'd like to share with us on this?
Yes, I was paying attention this time and apologize for my delay on the first time up. No, really, it's pretty much the same. The few items, a few items that were listed as, I will say, not in compliance, we certainly can comply with. I think one of them was the rear setback. We took the 20-foot buffer as the, as a buffer setback and also a parking setback. I believe it's 25 foot, so we can simply, we can adjust our site plan for that. And I think one of the other questions that maybe will come up or be asked is hours of operation, and we can address those if that's of concern.
All right. Thank you. This item I only have listed as a single motion for the conditional use permit, not site plan approval this evening. There's a variety of things, some that you hit on that still need to be worked out and worked through. But as far as the outdoor storage request, I have no issues with it. Ed?
No.
Steve?
No, I have no.
Greg?
Yeah.
Michael? David?
No.
Mayor?
Officer.
Len, anything else?
I do. I have questions about the, not the self-serve storage units, but the outdoor storage. It's sounding like a pod-type
Correct.
Connex kind of trailer situation stored back there? Would there be any like recreational vehicles or anything else intended?
If you could come up with a name and address, and then we could answer the question. Thank you.
Hello, you're my name is Rahil Rashid, so this is my project. So are you talking about that back building?
Yes.
Okay, so let me tell you a little bit.
There's a loading dock and then.
Yeah, so let me tell you a little bit about my background. So I've been doing international relocation for last eight years. And anybody moving into the United States or moving out of the United States, we deal with shipping, packing, and everything, trucking. So a lot of times that we have come across where the people move in and they haven't bought the house. They move to the United States, they haven't bought the house, and they don't know, they can't take their goods. So they want storages. So what we have been doing, that we have been renting to smart public storage wherever. And that is not the right way because these places are self-storages, and these places doesn't have docks and doesn't have a proper shelving for those stuff to be stored. So that particular building will be dealing with all those international moves, plus as a transit center for van lines, where van lines have stuff which may be a couch which is going to Cincinnati. And that is, that is not cost-effective for a trailer to go all the way to Cincinnati, drop off that. So we can just put it in our walls, wooden walls, and then if some, our trucks are going that direction, we can just put that little piece of thing and send it there. So, and with the proper way, with the docks and all that stuff. So it's kind of a warehousing for household goods. So there will be staff which will operate, normal hours, eight to five, Monday to Friday, because in international moving, the, we don't work over weekends. So it's strictly Monday to Friday. And most of the container operators from the Cleveland Railroad or anywhere else, they even don't work after three o'clock because they have to be back at the port or wherever they are before five, and they are very strict about it. So even though we have operating hours of eight to five, I doubt even if we can, we can stretch ourselves to five o'clock. So that is mainly for that, for storing of household goods in a proper manner, how they should be stored.
But what is the outdoor storage for that?
That's the outdoor storage.
So that's the outdoor storage, I think.
In pot, that, those things in pods, in the, in the back area that's labeled.
Yes. So what happens is, let's say Rahil Rashid has moved. And now, I mean, we have certain pods which are stacked on top of each other, and we just label them all. So this was a 20-foot container came from, moved from UK to US, and this is Mr. Rahil Rashid's stuff. So we'll put it in the specific part, we label them, we lock them, and whenever somebody, Rahil Rashid says, "I'm ready to move in," we already know, hey, that pod has the stuff.
All right. It's a little different than what we see in outdoor storage.
Exactly.
That's why I always want to make sure it's not like vehicles or construction materials or.
No, no, no. I strictly deal in only household. So, and the pods make it easier to store.
It's like a mix of a transload point and a staging area.
Yes, yes. It's a strictly transload area. And since I'm into business too, so I'll use it for my.
Military, so I do, I've done a lot of moves, so.
So. So, yeah, so I haven't dealt with military a lot. I mean, I have been outsourced by some agents, but I don't really have.
No, and that's not what I'm asking for, but I get the concept.
Yeah, yeah.
You have people who have moved into this country, they're waiting to find, settle in where they are. And this is a holding area slash.
And even other way around, like somebody moving out and they just leave. Oh, we have, we have to report in Belgium on blah, blah, blah day. So can you just pack your stuff, store it till you get the container? You know, you can't get the booking on your.
It's containerized, so you don't lose everything.
Yes.
And when they're ready, as you said, like when they're ready to transit out, transit in.
Yeah, yeah.
You push the button.
Yes, 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 pretty much.
Len did that?
It did. So what I'm hearing, though, is the office function at that building in the back has really nothing to do with the self-service storage.
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay. So then our concern with when the site plan comes in would be that lighting's directed, you know, towards a way, not towards the residential district behind there, but the other way, and that there's a fence back there.
Yeah, yeah. It will be, yeah, it will be all fenced, yes. And lightning, whatever is the city's requirement, obviously we can meet those requirements. But to be very honest, I don't need a huge number of light back there because it will be, it will be like, operation will be 5:00 PM. So we won't be dealing anything at night anyway. So we really not too much into that. So if city has some certifications, we are more than welcome to address that.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah, I have a question. The pods, will they be stacked or?
Yes, yes, they will be stacked, yes.
So how high will that be?
So two are about 16 foot. So building can be around 20, 24 feet. And I mean, I'm not planning to stack more than two.
Okay. So beside a fence, will there be any landscaping back?
Yes, there will be landscaping, yes.
Between the residential and, you know, and your area there, plus, you know, the eight o'clock in the morning, that, that'll be the earliest, right, that anybody would come back?
Yes, because, because we have full-time employees, so we don't, I mean, we don't operate. So it can be eight, I mean, I'm flexible. It can be nine as well, so it won't be before that.
Len, do we know how much, how much do we have between his property and the residential?
There's a buffer on the residential side, and there's a buffer on the industrial side. There's, is there a total of 100 feet net in buffer?
From the building, the building is, but the buffer from the containers would be 25 feet when we adjust for.
On this site. But then there's another buffer that's HOA-controlled on the residential side.
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, you're right.
How much is that? Do we know?
Like.
It's actually, it's actually arched. It's curved, so it has.
As we're looking here, right?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I would say that that's probably close to 100 feet at the narrowest. You would have about 75 feet at the narrowest point down here.
Okay. Is that treed currently?
But it's treed on the residential side. It's pretty heavily wooded. I can't really tell how wooded it is on the, on the buffer piece on the industrial side. It is treed, but then, of course, the trees will be lost on the actual development site. And there are no trees underneath the transmission lines.
Right, correct.
As well as in the winter, there'll be barren trees.
Yeah.
You'll see right through that, to that property.
Yeah.
And you'll see they're stacked.
A fence was stated, and any new landscaping would be evergreen oriented.
And if we can mound, you know, we have 25 feet in there. If we can mound a little bit to elevate this, and we promise not to cut any trees on the residential property.
Well, this would record, that would be my concern, the visual from the residential to see these stacked pods there in the wintertime. I would hope that we could do our best to try to buffer all of that.
Roll over.
That's pretty high. It's 16.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. We'll be back to you in the regular portion of the meeting agenda. Thank you. Next up is the building addition for, right now we're decorating 2066. Next up is the building addition for Rittenhour decorating, 2066 Pace Parkway. Name and address and an overview of your requests for this evening, please.
Trevor Eckstein, Geis Companies out of Streetsboro, Ohio, on behalf of Mike Rittenhour. Other than this middle, I'm not sure what questions I have. It's a, you know, almost a fourteen thousand square foot addition. And this addition is to look like an expansion, not a contrast in the existing building. We're hunting down rigs to match existing. We're hunting down metal panel to match existing so that when it's finished and complete, it looks like it was not an afterthought or a different owner came and tack on in addition to it. It's to look uniform and that it's always been there. And Lynn Muter and I had a brief discussion about the handicap parking and that we would, that she would like another one, and I agree. And it's just painting on pavement at this point. And to move them, to move them towards the more used doors and absolutely not a problem at all. We can relocate and add the handicap parking.
It's one of, something on that that, I know we talked about it, but I noticed there's the one accessible space shown. However, there isn't the space next to it striped off.
Like for the vannings up?
Not on the, not on the landscape drawing, maybe.
I think it is on maybe the site.
It is on the, on the-
Yeah, if you look at the colored site plan, it's there.
So that's easy just to relocate those closer and just put the other space on the other side of the striped area.
Absolutely. Add a, add a space. And so we don't, we don't lose any counts other than regular parking, we add a handicap park space and it's in a more appropriate space.
I know there was also some comments and concerns regarding stormwater management. I know that SWP three has been submitted for review, but there's still some issues, I guess, being looked at for stormwater management capacity and function. Are you aware of that and addressing that?
Coincidentally, Matt Weber is the civil engineer and well, he's working with engineering department to make this compliant. So if there's an issue to be aware of, I'm sure he's aware of it, yes.
Mr. Weber, have you had any conversations with Amy Moore?
I have, yes. We've discussed this. It's, there's a history to the drainage out there and we just need to work together to make sure that everyone's fully aware of
I think the point is that you are aware of it and more so the owner is aware of it so that later on down the line, anything you design comes up, you're questioned there, they know what's going on. As you said, there's some history back into this area, so as long as you're on top of it, and you always seem to be, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt.
We will and I appreciate that.
All right. Ed, any comments or questions on this?
No, at this time.
Steve?
I have nothing, no.
Craig?
No, I don't.
Michael?
No, Mr. Chairman.
David? Mayor?
None to me.
Lynn, anything else that the planning commission should be aware of on this?
It looks like the way the initial building was placed on the site, that it was always intended to be expanded that direction.
It was. And we did the original building, so that was a pad-ready site leftover. And I I don't know if the stormwater was always designed for the full capacity. It usually, it usually is when we, when we design them.
Yeah. I mean, it's nice thought. Hopefully the numbers will prove itself without too much standing water.
Or the requirements change, and the code changes and Matt's stuck with that, so.
Lynn, have we heard from the fire department on this regarding the fire hydrants or we need to make that one of the-
No, they have no objection to the hydrant location at the street.
So I can scratch one of the conditions from that.
Like, he liked it that it's a straight shot back on the new drive line.
All right. Thank you. If you have a seat, we'll be back to you shortly. Last item on the work session agenda is the parking lot expansion, 2033 Edison Boulevard for Paul Mitchell the School. Name and address and-
Regan Gettens, 1535 Lincoln Avenue, Lakewood, Ohio. Thank you for the opportunity to address the commission, Chairman Cohen, Mayor Scafidi, and the balance of the members. We are here, as you mentioned, requesting the expansion of the existing parking lot at 2300 Edison Boulevard at the corner of Route 91. I'm joined this evening by the ownership group, Nicole and Orlando Cumberland, my colleagues, Dave Treat and Norm Eldon. We have been and are grateful for Ms. Muter as well as Ms. Moore with the engineering department. I do know that I've been copied on correspondence between the engineering department and our engineer who is actively working on the underground detention plan for this expansion of the lot. As you might be aware, the Cumberlanders have consistently made a significant investment in the city of Twinsburg. I believe they've operated their existing business, the Paul Mitchell Salon, or Paul Mitchell School for two decades now. And they have the confidence in this community to make an even more significant investment at the corner of 91 and Edison. I'd be open to any questions you might have for myself, my colleagues, or the ownership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, the submitted landscape plan is now in compliance. Is that correct?
It is compliant in terms of numbers and plant material. Yes, there's a little bit of a question mark in terms of the types of trees that are specified for the railroad frontage. There are overhead utilities there. The first string of poles are really close to the curb, but then there's a secondary set of overhead utility lines that may come into play on this.
Well, if there's issues that that needs to be revised or updated on the species, that'll be administrative handling.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we had the same issues when Manor Care went in, the facility that's called Legacy at this point. They just ended up using a smaller tree of less stature and it's fine, so.
And as we discussed, we intend to take a thorough look at the east side of the property. There are some wonderful mature trees that have been overgrown over a period of time with brush and other vegetation. So we intend to maintain any healthy mature trees that are existing.
Sure. Well, I was glad to hear you mention in your explanation underground storage facilities for stormwater management so that the owners are aware of that. Obviously, there's not a lot of space on the property and it really is the only way to address it, but there's also a significant cost to doing that, so there should be no surprises that you're, that you're aware. And I appreciate that because sometimes it is a surprise. So obviously, there's a list of a few things that are requested in the planner's report. Submit all the conditions report for the existing stormwater facilities, the abbreviated stormwater SWP three, stormwater management plan and calculations that you obviously are working on. And removal of the word "concept," it's located on many drawings. Yes, sir. What we're approving this evening is what you've submitted, not the concept to let you move it around. You have the ability to do that, but if you do, that will require you to resubmit and come back to us. So just so you're aware of that. Ed?
No, at this time.
Steve?
No, I think you, I, that was my only concern was the other round, stormwater retention, just because of the amount of parking area. But I think it's a great site. I think it's gonna actually enhance your facility because of the access of the freeway being close proximity. And the fact that it actually exits onto 91 at a signalized intersection is gonna be beneficial as well. So I look forward to you guys expanding and growing.
Thank you.
Craig?
I have a question just for Lynn Moore. On the zoning part, we talked about permeable surfaces that allow some entrainment of water. So this, I assume, is not a permeable surface?
It is not.
Like what is considered permeable surface?
So if you ever go to the Metro Parks Nature Center parking lot, that one is permeable. So there's a maintenance factor associated with that. It, that definitely, if you go up there and throw a bucket of water on it, it will seep through the asphalt. Also, silt will clog the ability for water to seep through the asphalt. So there is some maintenance and upkeep with that. I'm thinking maybe in this type of commercial facility that it's gonna be a pretty big parking lot at the end of the day. It's not desirable.
Just like something that's considered for flat surface repaving or, it seems like it'd be appropriate.
We don't require it? I think we allow it. Do we allow it, Amy?
We do allow it. The concern is maybe that it's, of course, clogging silt and debris and it no longer functions at the end.
Yeah, you plan for it to seep through and it doesn't.
Yeah, and it depends what you're building up to. If you're building a, you know, a solid play-
Well, good, is it?
You know, so you've got to do a little bit more, you know, make sure that you set it to a better water. Metro Parks doesn't particularly like it because the current tree, it rashes, it makes it loose and it cuts off. I actually like more or less going in to do some, or that way to Metro or already to park the location that takes it off and then you actually create a, that it goes down to get rid of it, as opposed to this parking lot. It shoots the function and lasts longer.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for the explanation. Anything else? No. Michael? David?
No, thank you.
Mayor?
No, I just, I'm glad to see that this is going forward and we've been working with these folks for quite a while since they came to City Hall. And they were actually looking to relocate, so I'm just happy that they're staying here and they've relocated what in the city of Twinsburg and their business is still here. Thank you.
Lynn, anything else on this?
I would ask the applicants, just for the record, to talk a little bit about the classrooms and how they're used and how that relates to the parking requirements. If you could read the architect's drawings, there's various different stations that appears as though the students move through the various stations inside the building. And I think that's probably driving the student parking calculation that was submitted.
Sure. Actually, we have several different schedules, so all of our students aren't necessarily in the building all at the same time. We have a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday schedule. They're not always, even when the students are in the building, they're not in the same classroom all at the same time. So they're spread out pretty evenly throughout the classrooms. And then, of course, on the clinic classroom, which is the large classroom on the clinic floor where they take guests. So it's, it's pretty well, they're pretty well spread out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Ed?
No.
We'll see you back in a few minutes in the regular agenda portion of this evening's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is 7:44 and we will move into the regular meeting agenda. The first item is the approval of the March 20, 2023 minutes. Are there any comments or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, they'll be accepted as submitted. Second item, public participation, the opportunity for members of the community to address planning commission. If anybody would like to speak, we come forward now, name and address. Seeing none, we'll roll on. Item number three is the text amendment modification. I think it was pretty straightforward. Anybody have any other comments or questions for Lynn regarding this item? I would like to make the following motion. I move that planning commission make a positive recommendation to city council for the proposed revisions to the zoning text amendment as noted in the amended ordinance 60-2023 dated June 27, 2023 to add child daycare facilities as a conditionally permitted use in the C5 mixed use, I'm sorry, in the C5 mixed residence business district with the conditions as noted in the ordinance. Second by Michael, any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Recommendation 5-0, that'll be on council's agenda, I believe, tomorrow. Which, by the way, gentlemen, it was important to get through this because I think in order for it to make it onto the ballot, they need this for tomorrow. So thank you for looking at it, Lynn. Thank you for your work on this with the lot director and planning commission. I know it was a lot of back and forth, but I think we're still in a good, good spot.
We are.
Good. Second item, or fourth item on the regular meeting agenda is the lot split and consolidation. If Ms. Brown could please come forward. Anything else to share with planning commission regarding?
Well, I wanted to address what Mr. Shebeck was saying in regards to, you know, the home that's gonna be built in the future possibly. At one point, I had already looked into that, building a 2,500 square foot house there. And it would be about fifty to sixty foot, feet long. And from where, you know, between the property adjacent on the left and the right, it was allowing enough space for there to be a backyard even with the well. If you, if you look at the map, you could probably kind of tell that too, if you kind of plotted out like fifty to sixty feet from behind, like a hundred feet going back from the road, because that was kind of, or two hundred feet, wasn't it, two hundred feet going back from the road?
I don't remember now.
Oh, okay. Because I know it was like, there was a minimum of, I believe it was two hundred feet, that it had to be back from the road.
I know it could meet the side yards. The builder she was working with, she could meet the side yards.
Yeah.
Right, because the one house was a little bit more towards the road. And then the one, actually the one that I own on the right is a little bit farther back.
Yeah.
So they wanted it to be, you know, kind of in between at least, or-
The one on your property is 131.7 feet back.
Okay, then it was a hundred feet.
The other side is a little closer.
Yeah, I think that one was like a hundred feet.
Yeah. I just think the idea is that, and the BCA will probably have to do this with the building commissioners, by creating that area that shows what's the buildable area based on the setbacks for the front yard and side yards and missing, because you can't go down the well, will just define the area for you or somebody in the future.
Right. And then for cosmetic reasons, I mean, I think maybe there could be some landscaping or maybe something built around it that's also gives access to the well when it needs maintenance and repair and whatnot, but still will provide some type of, you know, cosmetic.
Yeah, I think cosmetic's not an issue. It just can't generate structure itself on the easement portion.
Right.
That's all.
But I don't know if the, part of the problem was the way that it looked in the backyard for the future owner of, you know, the property that might be built over there, if that was part of the issue or was that what, was that part of the concern too?
Just a general concern on-
No, because both the lots are gonna be very difficult. I mean, the current structure that's there is, obviously, eventually, they're gonna wanna either build onto it or demolish it and build another house and you're gonna be in the same situation. All those houses, because of the lot sizes that they are, have had issues with building in the envelope. And alls I said was that here we have an example where we have two non-conforming lots owned by the same owner, should be a lot consolidation. Make it a conforming lot that has no restrictions. That's all I'm saying. I understand you want to sell the one lot and put the money back into the existing house or whatever, but that, I'm all for making conforming lots. So here we have a case where we're making a performing lot because we have two lots owned by the same owner. And we're asking for them to make an existing smaller lot a little bit bigger and making the other one a little bit smaller. They should be combined and made into one lot. That's all I'm saying.
But then that would have, that would require a tear down of the property that I have come.
No, all I'm saying is-
And then there's gonna be a big lot on the side. I think that kind of looks, you know, bad too. know, bad too.
Yeah, but that, that little house is not going to be there for perpetuary. Eventually, somebody's going to want to buy that and tear it down. Because that's what people do now. They buy houses, older houses, tear them down and build a new house. That's all I'm saying is that we're taking two non-conforming lots and still making two non-conforming lots when we have an opportunity to make one lot that's conforming and larger. That's all.
So is this going to be kind of like the reason why they won't be, won't allow me to do this then?
There's five votes, so.
Yeah, there's five here to make, you know, yes or no, but it's still contingent upon BZA. They may agree with Mr. Shebeck and his philosophy on that. They may not, or they may split. I, I don't know how they're.
Part of the zoning appeal process is there has to be a hardship. And by us approving that, we're creating the hardship, in my opinion.
Okay, so can I chime in on this?
Yeah.
Please.
Okay, so the larger vacant lot is conforming. The applicant could build a house on that as it stands right now without required.
I can't because of the fact that you guys said that there's no, it's too close to the other lot and the fact that there's no driveway.
The house with the lot or the vacant lot?
The vacant. The, the, the house with the lot.
Okay, the house, the vacant lot, the vacant lot is a conforming lot of record and you could build a house on it as it is. The vacant lot, not the lot with the house.
That's not what I was told though, when I, because I had already actually went through the process of wanting to, trying to build a house.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know what that's about. That house could be connected to centralized utilities. It's ninety-three feet wide. It meets the lot area standard. It's a conforming lot of record. It's a single-family zone lot. The smaller lot, which has the house on it, is a non-conforming lot. The action that is being requested by the applicant would allow for a driveway to access individually each of the parcels. Without this action, there's no potential for a driveway to the existing home without it probably being a shared driveway. So it's really a question of, well, that shared driveway is not so desirable. It appears as though a house can be built on the larger vacant lot and still meet the setback standards and also allow for a driveway at some future point in time to access the existing house.
Which is what the.
That's what this is about.
So I'd stand corrected. So we're taking a conforming lot and a non-conforming lot.
And making two non-conforming lots.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's still my issue.
Right, I know.
When we could just do a lot consolidation and have one conforming lot and then you can do whatever you want with it.
Yeah.
But with only one house.
Yeah.
Not one house.
Other than the owner has put, made quite an investment in the existing house at this point.
Yeah.
All right, anything else from anybody? All right, I'm going to make the following motion upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant along with the submitted lot split and consolidation plat for ninety-eight seventy-nine Shepherd Road, permanent parcel numbers sixty-four dash zero-two-one-six-zero and sixty-four dash zero-two-one-six-one, date stamped received May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. I move for final approval of the lot split and consolidation with the following conditions. Approval of the lot with variances by the Board of Zoning Appeals and two revisions to the survey map easement language and existing right-of-way width. Second by Michael, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
No.
You have approval for one. Now you go and kind of report zoning appeals for them to review and make the final decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the lot consolidation and right-of-way dedication for the whole orthodontics site in the C-five district on Daryl Road. Lynn, you said there's really no one here, but you see no reason why we can't move on this item?
Right, the owner, applicant controls the lots that we've asked to be consolidated. The city engineer and planning commission has requested the expansion of the right-of-way. What else you see on that plat is two of the lots are planted to the center line of Daryl Road. So that just brings the line back in keeping with the right-of-way boundary. If this will move on to city council for the right-of-way dedication.
Right, yeah, part of it's an approval by us, part of it's, as I have known, it is up motion to the, the city council for a recommendation. Anybody else have any further comments or questions regarding this item?
Does this change, were they trying to get access to the, the road going to the school from early on and, but they could not get it, right? That was.
Yeah, that was not something that they ever, that they asked for.
And this consolidation doesn't allow that?
It basically, yeah, it basically takes the multiple lots that they're under their ownership, it puts it into one, and it takes the front yard of right-of-way line and pushes it back to line up so that they now have the full line of right-of-way across the full length of property. All right, upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant, I don't know, maybe that's not true. Maybe I can change that. I guess I'm going to make the following motion for the replat and lot consolidation for ninety-one eighty-four Daryl Road, permanent parcel number sixty-four dash zero-zero-two-six-one, sixty-four dash zero-two-zero-three-zero and sixty-four dash zero-three-five-two-two, date stamped received May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. I move for final approval of the replat and lot consolidation with the following conditions. One, add the required signature line for the clerk of council. Two, add required zoning district notation. And I move within the same motion that planning commission make a positive recommendation to city council to accept the right-of-way dedication. Second. Second by Steve, discussion? Remember that a vote yes on this would be for both of those items. If for some reason you do not want to vote yes for both, say so as you go through roll call.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
So we have an approval for the consolidation and a recommendation for the right-of-way dedication for the city council. Next item up is the conditional use permit request for outdoor dining and final site plan approval. Mr. Mailer, welcome back.
Hello again.
Anything else to share on either of these two items this evening?
Not really. I think we discussed it openly and fairly.
Thank you. Ed, anything else?
No.
Steve?
Nope.
Good. Craig?
No.
Michael?
Mr. Mr.
All right, first motion, upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representative along with the submitted conditional use request and application for burgers to beer, eight-nine-four-one Wilcox Drive, permanent parcel number sixty-four dash zero-seven-nine-four-four, date stamped received May tenth, twenty-twenty-three. I move that planning commission recommend to city council issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow an outdoor dining area in the C-three interchange business district. Second by Craig, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Conditional use request five zero recommendation to council. Secondly, upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representative along with the submitted site plan, lighting and landscape plan for burgers to beer, eight-nine-four-one Wilcox Drive, permanent parcel number sixty-four dash zero-seven-nine-four-four, date stamped received May tenth, twenty-twenty-three and June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three respectively. I move for final site plan approval. Approved by, second by Steve, any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Mr. Walker? Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is the conditional use permit request for outdoor storage, Dutton Drive, through Weber. Anything else that you would like to share with planning commission this evening regarding this application?
I would share that back in high school, I learned a lesson. Whenever the principal asked me to discuss a matter with him three times in a row, remain silent on the third time. I have nothing further to say. Thank you.
Was a wise man. Anything else on this? Steve?
No, good.
Craig?
No.
Michael? Anything else on this?
Nothing else.
I'd like to make the following motion upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representative along with the submitted conditional use request and application for let's get moving self-storage facility, Dutton Drive, permanent parcel number sixty-four dash zero-eight-four-five-five, date stamped received May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. I move that planning commission recommend to city council issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow outdoor storage in the I-two limited industrial district.
And self-storage? Did you say that?
I said that for outdoor storage. Is self-storage a conditional use permit also?
Yes, it is. Yes.
I missed that. So we need to amend the motion to include, to allow outdoor storage and self-storage in the I-two limited industrial district. You have a second. Second by Michael. Did everyone get that? Does that make sense to everyone? Yes, my, my bad. I did not, for some reason, realize that self-storage was also only.
Yeah, oddly, it's in the conditional use permit section.
Okay. Well, we'll all bolt into this for outdoor storage and self-storage. Ed, anything on this for?
No, sir.
Steve?
Nope.
Craig?
No.
Michael? Just obviously be aware of the things discussed when you come back for the site plan, the importance of working a good buffer between this property and the adjoining residential district. Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Recommend to council five zero.
I also learned to say thank you and then leave quickly. Thank you, everyone. I do appreciate it.
Next item is the building addition, Rittenhour two-zero-six-six Case Parkway. Anything else to share with planning commission this evening regarding your submission?
Just a thank you to Lynn for the guidance and patience. And other than that, no further comment.
Ed, anything else?
No, Mr. Chair.
Steve?
Nope.
Craig?
No.
Michael?
Mr. Chair.
Lynn, anything else?
Nothing else.
Like to make the following motion upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representative along with the submitted site plans and landscape plan for the Rittenhour Group Building Addition, two-zero-six-six Case Parkway South, permanent parcel number sixty-four dash zero-six-eight-six-nine, date stamped received June seven, twenty-twenty-three. I move for final site plan approval with the following conditions. Add an additional accessible parking space, approval of the final engineering, including the abbreviated SWP three, the stormwater management plan, and the long-term maintenance agreement by the city engineer. Second? Second by Michael, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Approved five zero with the following conditions to work on.
Thank you.
Last, and surely not least, this evening on the agenda is the parking lot expansion for Paul Mitchell the School at two-zero-three-three Edison Boulevard. Anything else that you would like to share with planning commission this evening regarding your submission?
We two are very grateful to Lynn and Amy for the guidance they've given us to date and the anticipated cooperation and stewardship of this, this wonderful project that we're excited to complete. So thank you to both of you.
You're welcome.
Ed, anything else?
No, Mr. Chair.
Steve?
Nope.
Craig?
No.
Michael? Like to make the following motion upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representative along with the submitted site plans and landscape plan for the Paul Mitchell the School parking lot expansion, twenty-three-hundred Edison Boulevard, permanent parcel number sixty-four dash zero-five-one-eight-six, date stamped received June seven, twenty-twenty-three. I move for final site plan approval with the following conditions. One, submit a little conditions report for the existing stormwater facilities. Two, approval of final engineering, including the abbreviated SWP three and stormwater management plan and calculations. And three, removal of the concept notation from all submitted plans and documentation. Approval is for the drawings as submitted and any revisions or changes will require re-submission and approval from planning commission and all city departments. I'll second. Second by Steve, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Approved five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Communications and miscellaneous. Ed, anything this evening?
No, Mr. Chair.
Steve?
Uh, I don't see here.
Craig?
I think, when's the September meeting scheduled? I, I'll miss that if it stays as scheduled.
Okay.
The September meeting is the twenty-fifth.
I have a business trip I just got planned, but I'll go be here for that. So, to let you know.
Heads up. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Michael?
Things is always going, a lot of stuff coming this last month. It should give us up to date.
You're welcome.
Separately, I always appreciate the different applicants that come here. Know that we had a visit to cottage industry and helping people move internet.
Right.
It's amazing to see what comes up in this town, this meeting. Other than that, nothing else.
Agreed. Thank you. David?
I just want to thank you guys for all your diligence with all you do. There was a lot to this meeting and, and for Lynn and Amy. Thank you. That's.
You're welcome. Yeah, right. So you got your work cut out for you tomorrow night.
Right.
I, I'm going, I took avid notes. So hopefully I get you in good shape for tomorrow's meeting.
I'll be ready.
Yeah. I would like to note that I did caution the Paul Mitchell School applicant about the concept label on those site plans.
Mayor, anything under federal, this way it's in communication?
No, it's just nice to be here again. I haven't been to a planning commission meeting in a while and I see that the, the group here is still just as professional as always. And thank you for all of your service. You guys do a great job. We really, we, we all appreciate you.
Thank you. You're always welcome to come and join us.
I just wanted to thank Amy for making yourself available for this evening's meeting. I know there was a few things that, one that came up specifically that she addressed. So thank you and a couple that we weren't sure of, but I think were handled pretty, pretty well. So thank you for, for being here. We missed you also. Maybe we won't get to see you for a while again. Lynn, an overview of anything you have to share, anything that you see coming. Lynn, an overview of anything you have to share, anything that you see coming up on the horizon? Obviously, we do not have a meeting in July.
We do not.
We'll be on break, and we don't meet until the third weekend of August, so, I mean, what do you, what do we see going on?
There are actually a couple of projects floating around out there that I would see coming through in August. Deer Run Apartments would like to add a clubhouse and swimming pool facility, and we've, staff has reviewed a couple iterations from various owners for a daycare on Creekside Drive. So, I think they're pushing to be on the agenda for August. Now, I didn't want to steal Craig's thunder, but we did have a working group meeting for the zoning code update, Code Twinsburg, this past, last week. And so we've been given the rough draft of the diagnostic report, which compares our current zoning code to our adopted comprehensive plans. So we have that draft document. We're going to look to publish that in the next week or so on, together Twinsburg.
Will we be getting notification that we should go there? Will we be getting copies emailed to us, or...
You won't be getting specific notification of that. What you will get is probably a postcard or something indicating a public outreach meeting on July seventeenth. We will have the first public meeting from OHM Advisors, the public outreach subconsultant in Council Chamber that evening.
Is that going to be recorded, will it be on roll?
Um, I don't, there will be a brief presentation that we might record. At least, we're asking for a brief presentation. On Wednesday, when we met with them, they said they weren't going to do a presentation, but we're going to have a presentation. It's open, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I know who to call to brief it up.
Yeah. So that process is moving along. I guess this is the report on that. The working group's been awesome, and Zone Co.'s been working diligently to stay on task, meet the timeline, and provide the materials as proposed, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's it.
And thank you for all that you, this was a hectic schedule, a lot of the going through with the applicant, so thank you for your hard work and putting it all...
You made a good one, Mr. Chair.
Getting there, sorry?
You made a good one.
Oh, hold on. Thank you. Seeing nothing else, everybody have a nice summer vacation, and we'll return here at eight-thirteen.